So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to a beautiful fall morning here, Monday, November 7th. And we are going to call this meeting to order. We'll move into new and councilor business. I believe we'll start with Counselor Belik if she's ready.
Thank you, your worship. Good morning, everyone. And after hearing the weather on the radio this morning, we are indeed fortunate up here in the Peace Country. In my motion that I've put forward under councillor's business, this background is actually the discussion I was having with myself and listening to the developments we've been doing in town and sort of a rationale in my mind that maybe we should do something to our bylaws to catch up with. We've just done the park thing with all the green areas, but the green that's integrated, the trees that are integrated into our developments that would help with stormwater runoff and help us with some carbon capture and keep us from having this gray earth that, you know, reflects heat and denudes the natural way of handling our stormwater. And so, I have brought this motion, whereas Dawson Creek is experiencing a rapid expansion of industrial commercial growth that is largely located on the east and now west perimeters of the core, and whereas vegetation loss, stormwater runoff, and carbon capture are affected by packing, gray earth, gravel, and paving cementing of lots, therefore be it resolved that the development permitting process be revised to include plans for slowing of stormwater runoff, tree and natural plant rehab, and carbon capture through those measures. And further, that industrial commercial sites developed over the past few years of economic upswing should be encouraged to remediate a portion of their land and especially at resale time that this new bylaw would be applied. Respectfully submitted.
You're seconding, are you?
I am.
Okay, so go around the room for discussion. First, I'll start Counselor Schuman.
I would like to ask staff if they're, like, in our current developing, development process, if there, what there is in place to, to address these issues, issues that Counselor Belik brings up.
Through your worship, the, firstly, I should say, your development permit must mirror requirements of your official community plan. So, the revisions that Counselor Belik is speaking about involve reopening the official community plan. So, we would be talking about the same series of public consultations that you just concluded. That official community plan does not require things like parkland dedication on industrial sites. It does require the storm management part, but not the tree planting. There's no allowance for carbon credits. I'd have to look into the carbon credit thing. I, I don't know if carbon credits that we issued would be, would have a commercial value to them or not. I haven't looked into that. What I can tell you is that to make this happen, you can't make it happen just through your development permit process. You have to start with your official community plan.
Okay. Counselor McFadden?
Well, I agree in principle, but I think it, I think it's a little bit more complicated than the motion would suggest. So, I think it should go back to staff to do a bit of research into it and get back to us with some ideas. In principle, it's a good idea, but I'm just not that certain how it would, I mean, how many trees, what kind of trees, where, just all kinds of questions. I don't have, I don't have the answer. Although, I do agree in principle.
Counselor Goode.
Jim, you were saying that we would have to open the whole official community plan. We couldn't just add an item to it?
Well, in order to amend an official community plan, which is what you just did, you didn't rewrite it entirely, you amended it. The Act considers that's the single most important binding document in the community, and you have to hold the public hearings, you have to have public consultation. The community has to be involved in writing or changing the official community plan. When they do, those requirements form the baseline under which your zoning and your development permit processes align. So, it's to provide certainty to the community and to developers. They can look at the official community plan and know the kind of things you'll look at when they bring a development permit forward. So, to make that work, it's, you start the process with the official community plan, and then you roll it through your zoning and your development permit.
Counselor Belik?
To respond to that discussion, I believe that in the official community plan, under the way we manage our stormwater and the, part of our statements and encouragements already in the process about encouraging this sort of behavior, it would just be moving it on to a step. And, and I think that the councillors are right, you know, this, this is a discussion that needs to be, to happen, and that this could be refined and come back from staff with a suggestion of how we could do this under the existing community plan, because it's well within our vision, mission, statement, and alignment goals. It's what our staff is doing. I don't think it would come as a surprise to anyone. It's a discussion around, as well as pipes and ways of handling, you know, we've discussed over the years, the packing on those sites that use a lot of water, plus then cause runoff to happen quickly. It's a discussion that we're having both internally and with the industry about how to do that. And my interest is in, perhaps it needs to go to strategic planning, about how we could handle that. But I think it's a discussion going on in our public works departments and our development departments, and that the groundwork is there in the community plan, just like it is for our, you know, solar hot water ready houses and stuff. It's a matter of implementing it and looking at stages to implement it. Perhaps, you know, I tend to look at our documents and see them a little more loosely and, and don't get the finer points of it. But I think it is a discussion that staff and council should have about what we could do under the existing plan. I think we have a very good plan, and if we look for opportunities within that to move in this direction, that would be sufficient, you know, for me. We have so much development. When you drive out there and look, you can see the difference it's making to our landscape. And possibly, a year ago, we wouldn't have even realized that. It's how the oil and gas industry have come along, too. You know, when they first were in this room talking to us, they didn't know how much water they were going to use. That's been sort of a development surprise, and I think the same with us. When I look around my community, it is now varying from what I'd like to see out there. Thank you.
Counselor Kenny?
I think it's an excellent suggestion, Marilyn. And I know out in Poo's Coopie, that, on the industrial sites, that they have been planting trees along their industrial sites. And I don't think that Poo's Coopie has any policies or bylaws insisting that they do that. But I think we should investigate it anyway, and even, you know, speak, speak to, you know, to the owners of the property and see if they are, you know, they go, you know, enter a discussion with them on planting small trees along their property edge. I think most of them would be willing.
And I know we do a lot of that through the development permitting process right now. I know Kevin works for that. Jim?
Through your worship, if this is referred to Committee of the Whole, then Kevin can bring you a report or bring you a discussion about how this resolution does or doesn't fit in with the official community plan as it stands now, probably not by the 21st, but by the, would be the January Committee of the Whole.
You know, I'd certainly be, be happy to also, at that time, have suggestions brought around about what sort of policy could be put in that met the intention of this, but fit in with our community plan better. So, that, that is exactly where I want it to take us. So, I would be happy to either withdraw the motion and ask you to talk to it, or...
It's just a motion to refer, and then it would be fine.
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to motion to refer, and Counselor Kenny, seconding? Okay, no discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Okay, thank you. Still on new councillor business, Counselor Belik, or did you have anything else you wish to add?
Oh gee, I went to the Peace Out film, and there was a great cross-section, a much larger audience than in Shagga Hall than I expected, one half to two-thirds full, and a great cross-section. I talked to several people from the oil and gas industry and people from PV and Pest and all of the organizations. The film was enlightening to me, who, coming, like us, coming from this area and having all the insider's information, it felt like it had missed a whole lot of stuff. It could have been a 10-hour movie to cover all angles of the things. But it was interesting to reflect on the reception it had down in Vancouver at the film festival, to be the top documentary and carried over and stuff, how little the south of DC understands where this energy is coming from and how the needs are being met. So, I liked that it stayed a kind of open-ended discussion about what the factors involved were and, and stayed very civil and conscious about the use of energy. But that's, that was the biggest part, was that, obviously, it was a big hit in the south and a big surprise to everyone there. So, I'm glad that we're just getting out that people understand where their energy's coming from, at least. So, yeah, been busy, and that's the last thing I can think of I went to.
Thanks, Counselor Kenny. Anything to add?
Yeah, I've been pretty busy, too, between work and council. I forgot to mention in my last council report, attending as acting mayor to the Raising of the Roof fundraiser there that the Dawson Creek Exhibition Association did, and it was a fantastic event. There was 250 people there participating. And I didn't stay right to the end. I don't know what the end results were, but I'm sure they're good. There was a lot of names in the silent auction, and there were some great items that were donated for the silent auction. And I also attended the Aboriginal Gathering Space opening in Northern Lights College. I'd like to congratulate Counselor Theresa Gladue. She did a marvelous job in organizing the event and initiating the Aboriginal Gathering Space, and it was very well-attended, and I was, I was very pleased to be there. And, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Counselor Powell?
Yeah, I wasn't at the last meeting. I was in Victoria, attending the tourism conference and listened to both the premier and Minister Pat Bell tell us that, oh, we're, it's going to happen, but we still don't have any money, any guarantee of such. But they're both very positive, and I have no doubt that it will before it's coming. Excuse me. Even though I will be here for one more meeting, I will, this is the last one before the election, so I'd like to congratulate the three that are running, Sue, Terry, and Cheryl, and potentially Mike. Congratulations on being acclaimed. I think it speaks to where this council has come, to see you acclaimed after what we went through in the election of 2008, the referendum of 2009, how this council and staff pulled together to get us through a very difficult time, the most difficult time I saw in the 12 years I've been on this council. And I think we can all be proud of that, but I think it really speaks to what the community thinks. Nobody from those other groups that followed us so hard stood up and wanted to take on mic. I think they realized what we've done over the last two years to bring this council back and to bring the city to where it has is well-appreciated, and I'm sure that the electorate will look favorably upon all of us as time goes by. I will miss it, but I won't miss this part of it. Thank you.
Thanks for those words, Bud. Appreciate it. Counselor Schuman?
Good morning, everyone, and it's been busy. I attended a day of the Aboriginal Health Conference and found that very enlightening, actually, very positive and enlightening. And also attended the Aboriginal Gathering Space opening, and would also like to congratulate Theresa on, on a really great space at the college that I'm sure will be very well-used. Lots of things going on in the community, so many things you can't get to them all. I had to miss the Peace Out movie because there was a installation of the Kiwanians, and it's just busy time, so, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Goode?
Good morning. I wasn't here at the last meeting either, because I was attending a funeral of a family member in Alberta. So, I wanted to say that we drummed for the premier when he came into town, which was an honor. And we also opened the Success by Six Conference. Heidi invited us there to open, and drum. And I also attended the Northeast Aboriginal Health Conference, which I thought was just absolutely amazing. I found out a lot of information and met a lot of, a lot, a lot of people. And I attended the Aboriginal Gathering opening.
You organized the Aboriginal Gathering.
And you sang.
And we sang. It was actually really good. I'm not running for council, as you guys know. I knew that in May. I just didn't bother announcing it at the time. I'm going to be working two additional weekends at the college, teaching Cree, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then, plus, Leo was kind enough to give me my own radio show, so that'll be keeping busy. And like Bud said, I won't miss this part of it. Thank you.
Counselor McFadden?
Thank you, your worship. Most of my activities, I think, have been, could probably be classified as campaigning. That being the case, I don't think I'll report upon it now, because I don't want to use this forum to advance my self-interest. Thank you.
Thank you. So, on that, then, we'll move to the minutes. We have 3-1, 3-2, and 3-3, which are public hearing, regular meeting, and special meeting minutes. So, Counselor Kenny and Counselor Goode. All those in favor, opposed, carried, and any business arising from any of those minutes. So, seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence. We have 5-1, which is a letter from Philip J. Currie from the Dinosaur Museum, and this is just outside Grand Prairie, actually. Counselor Belik?
Thank you, your worship. I'll move it for information.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Kenny, and then discussion. Counselor Belik?
I did want to say that, just serendipitously, I went to Tumler Ridge yesterday and saw the dinosaur museum there, which is a fabulous interpretive display, and met with Richard, who is the paleontologist, and he mentioned that Sue Kenny is on their board and how much they appreciate having her there. But it's a wonderful thing, but some of the people, I went with the nature club, and the Shains belong to this Peace River Museums organization, and talked quite a bit about this wonderful proposal in this dinosaur trackway. But I, the only thing I couldn't understand from this letter is whether they just wanted us to do a, a recommendation without any monetary commitment, or if it was strictly to do the certificate with a donation. Did you have that clear from the letter? I looked at it again, and it didn't...
The way I understand on the background of this, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, please, is that in principle, we kind of said we support this concept. They're asking for us just to sign this, saying that we support the concept, because they have not come to the city of Dawson Creek or this side to ask for any monetary contributions, but what they're looking for is basically support out in the region so they can go to their provincial government in Alberta and say, we have the support of the cities in the region, we're looking for funding. Because as you can see, they're going to be hitting up the city of Grand Prairie for funds, and it looks like it's a matching thing, city, and then province, and then feds, is what they're looking for. But one thing we want to take into consideration, I mean, it's great for the area, don't get me wrong, but we also have a lot of support from this council and from the region for what's happening in Tumler Ridge and what they're trying to promote as well. I just want council to be cognizant of that. I'm not going to say it's an either-or. I mean, it's good for the entire region, especially around tourism, if we can get more people up in the area. But the way I understand this is they weren't asking for anything specific, so, is that accurate, Jim?
Through your worship, my understanding is they're going to use your letter of support in the same way that Tumler Ridge's project used your letter of support to try to leverage funding from government.
So, Bud?
So, I just need to make some, the letter of support, and this motion is only for information. I firmly believe we should give them a letter of support, and I also firmly believe we shouldn't contribute monetarily, but it certainly helps Tumler Ridge. If that, if that museum was there, Tumler Ridge would be the next stop for everybody that visits that one, and vice versa. So, we've talked about this over the last 10 years, and always, even the Tumler Ridge people have always spoke up and said, yes, it would be a plus, simply because it brings people to the area with that specific interest, and the spin-off will, will certainly come. But our monetary thing should certainly be towards Tumler Ridge.
Yes. And just in case people haven't looked at a map lately, to get to either-or, they're going through Dawson Creek, so, for a tourism aspect.
Well, necessarily.
Well, if they're going to get to the other. Counselor Kenny?
Yes, yeah, and supporting, and supporting that, but Alberta recognizes paleontology and research and, and supports, supports it much more than, than British Columbia. A lot of the, the progress that, that we've made in British Columbia in preserving trackways and preserving our sites is due to the work that's being done by, by the work in Tumler Ridge, and they call it the Peace, the Peace Region Paleontology Research Center, because they cover the whole Peace Region, not just Tumler Ridge. I just wanted to point that out, you know, that, you know, they're, you know, some of the largest finds are, like, north of Port St. John. So, I, I think we should support it, too, because it, it sets precedence, and maybe, you know, if Alberta's successful with the Grand Prairie one, then maybe, you know, they'll, they'll look across the border and see the significance.
Yeah, well, in all fairness, I guess, in Alberta, they're decades ahead of British Columbia, due to the fact that they've had so much of their discoveries that they've had around paleogenological sites that they've had. So, I agree, because if we can bring this closer to home, in the sense in Grand Prairie or Wembley out there, then it puts a bit more pressure, I think, on British Columbia to recognize the importance of this. I mean, obviously, from an Alberta perspective, they recognize the tourism component that comes along with this as well, and that's why they're willing to help fund it, so.
That would be due to be put down the law?
Well, yes, we have a motion on the floor right now for information. We could defeat that motion, and they're not asking for a letter of support specifically. They're asking us to sign that certificate and send it back, because that's what they want to be able to hand off, so. Counselor Goode?
Did Counselor Powell make the motion?
No.
No?
No, we already have a motion on the floor, is what I was just saying.
So, we have to defeat it?
We have to defeat that motion.
Okay.
If you so choose. Right now, it's for information, so it's up to council. So, we can call the question on the information and then make another motion after, so. Yeah, so for all those in favor, for information. Opposed? Okay, there we go.
Wrong handed.
So, it is defeated, so now it's open for a new motion on the floor. Counselor Powell?
I'll second his.
I'll make the motion, not be signed, not just defeated, and adjourned.
Okay, Counselor Goode, any further question on that one? Beat that one up. All those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. And also, that was a great PowerPoint that they put in here with lots of information.
Beautiful, right?
So, we'll move on, then, to 5-2, which is a letter from the Dawson Creek Old-Timers. Counselor Schuman?
I would move that we grant the permission to host the hospitality suite in the Memorial Arena, Alumni Room, and mezzanine for the players and guests on Saturday, November 19.
Seconded by Counselor Goode. Any questions? This is an annual request usually for us. Okay, so all those in favor, opposed, it's carried. 5-3 is a letter from Minister Lechtrem that went to Joe Stanhope. Actually, I missed a specific request in here. Sorry, I'll go, Bud, you want to go first then?
I'll go first.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Kenny. Jim, just to remind me on this, reading through it quickly, there's no necessary specific ask, but it looks like they're asking for participation from staff or someone at our end, just to be involved.
My understanding is that they are setting up a task group, and they're looking for staff contact from any municipality that wishes to participate.
Do you need a separate motion, then, to task it to you, to either yourself or a staff member, as for information, okay, and we'll just follow up after?
There should probably be a specific resolution to authorize a staff person to participate.
Okay, so right now, it's for information, but Brenda, can we just go for information with adding this to Jim, or would you like...
Both the mover and the secondary are okay with changing the motion?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Okay, so, so the letter itself is for information, but tasking Jim to, hold on to that. Counselor Belik?
I, sorry, clarification, in reading the letter, I thought they were asking for staff from the ministry to be appointed. So, I find it a bit confusing, the letter.
The way I understand it, Minister Lechtrem has already gone to staff at the ministry and said, we are going to do this, but they want to reach out and try to have some municipal support on the task force.
I guess I would ask for a suggestion from you and Jim, who would be appropriate, and from our staff.
Yeah, and that's, that's why, right now, the motion, I guess, would be to, with that information and tasking it to Jim, and then Jim can always report back to us, I think, whether it would be himself or whether he would ask somebody else on staff. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. And a little early for delegations, we just have a couple of proclamations there, but we'll move on to reports, then. We have 7-1 is Report 11-188 from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is for our animal control agreement for the SPCA. Counselor Belik?
I move the recommendation that we sign the contract again.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Goode. And questions? Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, through you to staff. So, we're giving $100,000 a year, give or take, to this contract. Do we have any say in, or are we interested in any of the qualifications needed by, or qualifications of the people working at the, the SPCA, or do we, do we have any input into that, or is it just the decisions are made somewhere else with regards to qualifications with the people that run it?
No, we have our internal bylaw on this, too, for the policies.
Through your worship, the contract requires certain performance indicators, enforcing our bylaw, housing stray animals. There's a list of things that the contract covers, and it's up to the contract or how they cover those.
So, we can't request that, you know, the people running the SPCA have certain qualifications?
Through your worship, we can't under this contract, and I'm unsure why you would wish to.
Well, just making sure that there's qualified people running the SPCA, I guess.
Well, again, your worship, our protection is if the contract, if they don't deliver, or don't perform the deliverables in the contract.
Yeah, just like any other contract that we put out to the city, and then if council feels you're not following through, then don't give them the contract.
I understand, yes. I just had that question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, then, on that? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. 7-2 is Report 11-026 from the Director of Community Services, and this is the planning for greenhouse gas reductions, our update for the community energy plan. Counselor Powell?
I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you. And Counselor Kenny is seconding, and the recommendation being, we're going to forward this off to strategic planning. It'll be discussed further there, and I think we should thank staff, though, as well, because, as you can tell by this report, there was a lot of work and effort put into not only the background information that we've done here in the city, but really compiling what's already been discussed through our strat planning and putting into one document. So, again, Jim and staff.
It's a very complete report, and it's going to be a very interesting strategic plan.
Thank you, Counselor Belik.
Thank you. There, I had one concern in reading it, that we have, for a long time, had the, was it a bylaw, or that housing would be so alternate energy-ready, or solar hot water, heat-ready, and we haven't been enforcing that bylaw. I know we, oh, the way I was reading the summary was that part of our strategies would be to, to enforce that bylaw, so it's interesting. But I think when, when the director is maybe giving us committee of the whole, next week I'll address that, but do know what you're remembering about that.
Yeah, and actually, it'll be a great opportunity next week, you know, when Kevin's up, if you want to ask that question, because I know there was some discussion around that, and I believe that just, you know, council's just finalizing most of that, so. Counselor Schuman, and then Goode.
Yeah, so I found this very interesting. Of course, we're, we're sort of been learning a lot about this as we've been on council the last three years, but looking at the timeline and noting that it started, you know, back in 2003, that this isn't something that just came about with this council or the previous council, like, it's, it's been ongoing, this whole process towards sustainability for, for many years now, and it's, it's awesome to be forwarding this on to our strategic planning.
And of course, encourage everybody to look at this as well, because, as you say, this is almost 10 years we've been doing this. Counselor Goode?
I just have a question, and the question is, with all the industrial development going on within the city boundaries, is, is the, is the carbon footprint of Dawson Creek increasing?
Jim?
Through your worship, yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the policies that you have are relative to your own operations, and your own operations, you've identified places where you can reduce your carbon emissions you've identified places where you can reduce your carbon emissions. A big project on the future horizon is a biomass burner for the multiplex because it's a huge consumer of the product that the mayor sells under his other hat. So you've got strategies, there's recommendations in here about what projects you might wish to prioritize in that regard. In terms of the community, your policies don't apply to the community. You are making educational efforts with the community, and you're proceeding on things like solar readiness, construction bylaw, those sorts of things. But any community that is growing at the rate we are is going to have growing carbon emissions.
Yeah, and the Climate Action Charter refers to the corporate side as well. So this will be referred to strat planning then for the new council, so any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. I noticed the three that aren't running again had no problem forwarding it off. On that, let's move to delegations. We'll go back in here, and our first one we have is for restorative justice proclamations. We have Michelle Labicane?
Labicane.
Labicane, sorry, my apologies, and Patricia Burley. So I've got the proclamation here, and I'll just read this out. So whereas in the face of crime or conflict, restorative justice offers a philosophy and approach that views these matters principally as harm done to people and relationships. And whereas restorative justice approaches strive to provide support and opportunities to the voluntary participation and communication between those affected by crime and conflict, the victims, offenders, and community, to encourage accountability, reparation, and a movement towards understanding, feelings of satisfaction, healing, and a sense of closure. And whereas this year's theme of Restorative Justice Week is Revisioning Justice, it is an opportunity to learn about restorative justice, educate and celebrate along with other communities across the country during this week. So therefore, I do hereby proclaim November 13th to November 20th, 2011, as Restorative Justice Week in Dawson Creek. I'll just sign that, and welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, councillors, I'm just, I'm the coordinator of the North Peace Justice Society, and so we manage the restorative justice program in the whole North Peace and some of the South Peace every once in a while. The philosophy of restorative justice is based on community healing. In other words, the community decides what is best for itself in terms of certain criminal matters. While the formal justice system is adversarial, and punishment-based, the focus of restorative justice is on offender accountability, problem-solving, and creating an equal voice for offenders and victims. The best results occur when the victim, offender, and community jointly resolve the effects of the offender's behavior. Currently, the North Peace Justice Society is using the Community Justice Forum model. It is a safe, controlled environment in which the offender, victim, and their families or supporters are brought together under the guidance of a trained facilitator. This is usually done in a circle formation so that everyone can see each other. They jointly discuss the offense and how they've been affected, and together they develop a plan to correct what has occurred. It's righting the wrong. It can involve a simple apology and restitution for the victim. Other agreements may include community service work, counselling, or addictions treatment for the offender. We also train and support the conservation officers. They use the program, and I don't know how to explain this the best.
It's the, the restorative justice system has been used in the Conservation Officer Service here in B.C. for about five years. We have done files with large industrial spills, environmental, as well as wildlife. And it's a great opportunity, and it's been a learning experience for me for the last two years to take interest in this, because we have animals in the environment that don't, they can't speak for itself. So we have to have victims that are affected by these animals being killed out of season or the environment, or the environment being polluted. So it's a great system that is new to me as well, but I've experienced it. Last year, I had a file, and it went well, it was a success.
So, and that's the whole point of the revisioning. Using the restorative justice program can be used in many different forms. We're looking right now in Fort St. John to add an anti-bullying portion to the program so that we can involve the schools in becoming part of the restorative justice program. We are starting to do healing circles in the Aboriginal communities. This program is flexible, it offers some really good opportunities. For a first-time offender, you know, we call it when good kids do silly things, it really offers them a chance to repair the wrong, fix the right, learn from their mistakes. And in the end, it's a really good learning experience for them. We have a really good success rate in the community. My goal is to host some training coming up again in January, February. We're waiting to find out, because the trainer comes from Chilliwack. And we would like to invite as many Dawson Creek participants so that you guys can get the program up and running in Dawson Creek.
Excellent, thank you.
Any questions?
Well, it's been a great, great program too, like your comment, good kids doing silly things, I guess. Conversely, you can turn around, the whole point of the program is so the silly kids can now do good things. So it's actually, I've heard it's had quite a success, so councillor Gudue?
Hi.
Hello.
It's nice to see this going. We used to use this a lot in our reserve when we were little, they used to use that quite a bit. But are you in partnership with the School District 59? Because I know Karen Jones and Kathy Chisachat provide this training.
No, we are not. We are based on the other side of the river, but that doesn't mean those partnerships can't be formed. I will leave all this information at the reception desk, and there's my card and everything, brochures in there. Please feel free to share it. We will support, we will support anybody in the community that would like to start up the program, and we help them.
Because when we were, when I was at the Northeast Health Conference, Karen Jones had pointed out that they have been using it in the South Peace and Central School for the last couple of years, and they said it was, it was working wonders.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much. I do have, if you want to come forward, actually, I have the proclamation here that I can hand to you, in case the media would like to come forward. So it's for our next delegation, I believe we're just going to invite them in. Hello.
Hi.
Good morning. So we are at 6-2, we're at the Proclamation for Adoption Awareness Month, and so I'll just read out the proclamation, then invite you to come forward. So whereas adoptive families in British Columbia provide the love and support of a permanent family, and whereas the government of British Columbia wishes to recognize the care, compassion, and unselfish commitment of British Columbia adoptive families, and whereas there continues to be a need for adoptive families to nurture the growth and development of children, especially those with special needs because of age, physical, mental, or emotional disabilities, and sibling groups, now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of November as Adoption Awareness Month in Dawson Creek. I invite you to come forward. Thanks again for coming in.
I'm the Adoption Support Coordinator with Adoptive Families Association of B.C. I supply adoptive services, support services to all our families in the area. Karen Maxwell is the Ministry Adoption Worker. In the province at the moment, there are 4,700 children that are continuing care in the province of B.C. There are 1,200 children waiting to be adopted, and in the last year, they adopted 263. So we're packing away at it, but we never seem to get below the 1,200 waiting for homes.
We always need new families, great desperate adoption.
There's opportunity, obviously, through the, through the local office, maybe to come forward, even if there's questions, if they're not sure if they want to be adopted. I know we have the support, the resources, hopefully, there are people who come in and get those questions answered, to find out what's right for them.
Gotcha. Always available if they just want to inquire and gather more information and make decisions if they would like to proceed.
I know everybody I know has been involved, it's always been a very positive, life-changing experience for people who are willing to step up and help us. Well, thank you very much for the reason, councillor Gudue.
I have a question. How easy is it to find, like if you're adopted out, how easy is it to find your biological parents? Do you, or do they get assistance from the ministry that's adopted out the children?
Yes, there's a program called the Post-Adoption Openness Registry, and also the Adoption Renewal Registry, and you can contact me at the office, I can provide that full number. It's a whole office that does that work for you. And if the child was, or if the adoption occurred in B.C., they can help you track down those, that background information, if they're somewhere else in Canada, they can point you to the right agency. Every province, I believe every province has an agency that helps out with that.
Oh, okay, thanks. I have a friend that's looking for her family, so.
I've just, yeah, I have a, I'm a Ministry of Work and Adoption Worker, and I think I'm just going to do, because I'm an adoption worker.
Oh, okay.
But you still be worth something to this people.
All right, thank you.
There is quite an emphasis nowadays with adoptions, that there is openness agreements. So quite often, we have adopted three, we have openness agreements, and they have contact with the family and stuff. So it isn't the problem nowadays that it was, you know, a long time ago when everything was secretive and stuff. So they found that, I mean, the kids like to know where they come from and, you know, keep that connection. They just started fortunate enough to have two families instead of one.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Well, thanks again for coming in.
Thank you.
And so for one more proclamation that we have today, we have Michelle, or sorry, Catherine Charbonneau in attendance, and it looks like brought some friends as well. Good morning. I'll just read out this proclamation. So whereas on March 19th, 1993, the Government of Canada proclaimed November 20th as National Child Day to commemorate two historic events for children, the adoption of the United Nations' Declaration on the Rights of the Child, 1959, and the U.N. adoption of the Convention of the Rights of the Child in 1989. And whereas it is a day to remember that children need love and respect to grow to their full potential, and whereas it is a day to marvel at their uniqueness in all they have to offer, and whereas it is a day to celebrate the family and think about how adults affect the development of children close to them. And whereas this National Child Day celebrates "I Have the Right to Be Active," promoting the importance of physical activity for children's health and well-being, and whereas many individuals, organizations, and municipalities throughout British Columbia have since 1993 organized events in celebration of National Child Day, I do hereby proclaim November 20th as National Child Day in Dawson Creek. And please come forward. Good morning. That's your wife, you said, one more meeting. Thank you again for coming in, so that it's humanity.
Yeah, I'm Patrick Darman with Childcare Resources and Girl. Gloria Clea from School District, we're today as the Early Learning Project Coordinator. Maddie, sorry. And this is Carol Bandevan, she's with Childcare Resources and Girl as well, but to celebrate National Child Day. And to celebrate National Child Day, we are going to be doing coordination with the grand opening of the Early Learning Hub on November 24th. So we thought it was a great collaboration, as this year's theme is actually the right to be healthy learning centers. And I know in the Early Learning Hub, there is an indoor playground, which is very exciting. So we feel that children have the right to be active all year round, and children will have that opportunity, and that's quite exciting. So it's going to be on the 24th at 3 o'clock, and there are lots of children actually, and everyone can have a chance to come and check out the Early Learning Hub as well.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, delegation, for coming. I am so happy with what we as a community are doing, and especially with the early learning and the centers. I find it a great point of embarrassment in B.C. to know what poverty there is in child and family support, and I thank you for taking leadership roles and really encourage everyone who's witnessing this and coming to realize that B.C. has a horrendous child poverty rate that we need to address as citizens. And I'm so proud to be in the city where we're doing this and working together to do it, so thank you.
It's great, I think with the bench like these, we can put the spotlight on that, and it hurts with things like that, and help to make this up.
Yeah, so could you just tell us where the new early learning, like for all the public, tell us where it is and what it's all about? It's very exciting.
The Enterprise Center, which is behind South Peace High School, closed its doors at the end of June, and it's been resurrected, like last year's on the way, even have the launches, it's going to be the Strong Start Early Learning Hub. And inside the hub is a Strong Start Program for Parents, a free drop-in program for parents, access family services, which is foster parent support and behavioral diagnostics. The Child Development Center is putting in their infant toddler daycare there, and the Wowbus Office is now located in that building. And our absolute gem in the community, I think, is the indoor playground, it's now in there, and they're all free for people in the community.
Gloria, do you have posters?
Right now, the posters that are out are the invitation to come to the grand opening, and I think I know that you, I was hoping you would send it to all.
I believe it's my job already by any means.
Perfect.
Thank you. So just to invite all of council and everybody to come down.
Yes, please.
On the 24th.
Well, Matthew's there for sure.
Well, thanks, everyone, and we'll move back to where we were in our agenda, which would now be 7-3. I'll give you a second to get up to that. 7-3 is Report 11-027 from the Director of Community Services. This is regarding the Encana Events Center Concrete Work. Councillor Belik?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to move the recommendation and admire the switching around the funding to accomplish this, thank you very much. So I recommend, I move the recommendation that we support the concrete flooring proposal for the Encana Center.
Okay, thank you. I got seconded by councillor Schuman. Do I have any questions, comments? Councillor Powell?
It's great to see there's nothing hidden here that's going to cost us money, and I think we should make sure that Ross and Land Development Company is thanked appropriately from our letter at some point.
Yeah, thank you for that, yes, and it is nice to see a development company, I mean, come forward, and it's a, it's a space right now that's not being used. For those who haven't had the luxury of having a full tour...
Before the 19th.
Actually, what governs the timing is the fact that the cement plant shut down, and they no longer have work, so the work has to either, it's not the site itself, the site itself is heated, but unless the work is completed before the concrete plant shut down, it won't get done until...
That's true.
Is that a seasonal shutdown, or whoops?
The local concrete plants, as long as I can remember, usually shut down as soon as it starts getting quite cold throughout the nights and days, because they have a hard time operating the plant. And then at the same time, there's not as much happening pouring concrete over the winter. I know a lot of the developers I've spoken with recently have, in advance of what's going to be possibly a cold winter again, they're saying, a lot of them have gotten a lot of the cement work done, floors and foundations, in advance of that, so they can continue developing and doing the wood construction through the winter months that don't require the cement.
Hmm, that's something.
So Counselor Gledue, and then Kenny.
I just wanted to thank Barry and whoever was involved for bringing forward this initiative.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kenny.
Yeah, where are the concretes being laid? Is it, is it also where, like, the, the conference center rooms that, it's not down that far?
No, well, it's the opposite side of that. It's the area in the original plans that was earmarked for development or expansion, possibly into a, an exercise area or something to that effect.
Oh, okay, okay. It's across from the Rages dressing room.
Right. I, I thought that, but I was just kind of hoping too that it was...
It's almost, almost right underneath the, almost right underneath the entrance when you walk in.
Not the convention side.
No, not the convention side, that's not being touched yet. Any other questions, then? All those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. 7:04 is Report 11189. This is from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for a development variance permit at 8:40 Watson Crescent for heart modular homes. Counselor McFadden?
I'll move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel Kenny. Any questions or comments for this, other than it's great to see another vacant lot in infill in town? I mean, so, I don't see any issues at all, except for positives.
Yeah.
So, nothing else? Okay, so all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. And good morning, good morning, Mr. Newman, by the way.
Thank you.
Move on to bylaws. 8:01 is Fees and Charges Amendment, Bylaw 4125 for adoption. Counselor Schuman, seconded by Counsel Kenny. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Next, 8:02, and waiting to see how fast hands go up here, Dawson Creek Park Dedication Bylaw, 4126 for adoption. Counselor Bellak, Counselor Gledue.
Counselor Sheehan. We did it.
Yeah, seconded by everybody, I'm sure. Any comments? All those in favor, opposed, and it is carried.
I met Kathy, actually, our ex-staff who worked on it so hard downtown once, and talked to her over it, and she said, "What a fascinating project at the end of her career to review all, hard, 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 and how fascinating it was to find the history out." So it's been good for all of us.
Through your worship... Yes, thank you. Jim?
This actually should be part of the pre-election, or pre-election orientation for people wishing to be...
Exactly.
Here you have two bylaws, and one of them, you're going to charge the old timers more for their, for their leased space at the arena, and the other, you're going to dedicate parks. So sometimes hands are anxious to go up, and sometimes they're not.
Thanks. So on that, we'll move to, to mayor's business. Tyra's just gone to get me some of the information regarding the Candlelight Conservation Dinner, because that was quite a success, and I wouldn't mind if we can get the information, I'll read out some of the winners and the support that we had. But while I'm waiting for that, just a reminder to few people around this room and everybody in the community that is running for a position on council, November 25th, during the day, starting at 9:00 a.m. until around, well, later into the afternoon, we'll see how long goes, we're having our official orientation meeting for those six people that are successful to be on council. I'd like to extend that information, or sorry, that invite to the media for the morning part of the session. So Kristen and Matthew, they're here still, and I'll make sure I get ahold of the rest of the media if you so choose. That's November 25th, here at 9:00 a.m., we're going to be having our orientation. It's going to be an information meeting, get the new council up to speed on past, present, and future, and it'd be a great opportunity if you so choose, and there'll be a lunch provided as well. And thanks for having us. So go back on 9:01, under the mayor's business. Just have a few stats here I wanted to read out, and this is around the Candlelight Conservation Dinner, and I want to thank council staff and media, I didn't confirm, but for everybody in the community's involvement, and, you know, we did the draw around here, for people to go to specific restaurants. We had 13 restaurants participating, and we had 590 people fill out for the draw. That's how many people went out that night. That actually took the time to enter the draw. I know there's probably even more than that that didn't take the time. One highlight, Boston Pizza had 109 just at that one restaurant, and I believe Counselor Bellak, you were the one who went to Boston Pizza, as I saw some great pictures, you got quite engaged with the staff there, and...
They were into it.
Yeah, that was, that was great to see. So quickly, some of the, the four people who won, we have Jamie Moore of Chetwind, Margaret Berg of Ground Birch, Al Nelson of Dawson Creek, and Sean Bradley of Dawson Creek, who all won some nights and hotels and some spending money at restaurants, which was great. So on that, 13 restaurants participated, so I think it's important just to say how many people in the community got out and involved with that evening. So a big thanks to all the sponsors, I know B.C. Hydro spent a lot of time trying to promote this, but more importantly, Melanie Turcot, who everybody knows here in the community, in the city hall, who put a lot of time and effort into making sure that people recognized the importance of this evening and got involved, and so thanks to everybody.
Was B.C., sorry?
Yes, no problem.
Was Hydro monitoring our energy use in the city that night, or how were they?
You know, I can't answer that question. I know they, I don't think they were, the way I understood it. It was more of a promotional, just get out, get the businesses involved, get people understanding. It's just another opportunity just for awareness that don't have to have every light on to still have a nice evening. It's part of their conservation strategies. So on that, we'll move to the diary. Jim?
I'll kick that over to Gregory, Worship.
I thought you would.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks to the good fall weather. We've completed a lot of the exterior and the servicing work, and it looks like the weather's going to continue, so we should get that roof complete as well. We're still working on the interior, and we'll be starting the major work of encapsulating the lid and removing the remaining asbestos, and that's going to take us the better part of two months to complete. For people who are anxious to get inside and are wondering what it looks like, I've added a couple of pictures to the webpage, so if you just go onto the Calvin Crook Center webpage, on the city's webpage, under the construction pictures icon, there's a couple that show the pop-up roof and the opening from the basement right up to, to the roof on the inside. It's, it's very nice to see that something is actually happening. At the reclaimed water plant, things are going very well. Foundation walls are poured, and of course, our company couldn't have asked for better weather, and I think they were quite surprised to get it. The really good news is we've got the tests back from the SAGAR cells, and they're performing very well. They're meeting or exceeding all of our design parameters thus far, and they will continue to mature as, as time goes on, and will be fully ready by the time we've finished the plant, so that's all I have for this week.
That's great news. And I know a few people asked me about the Calvin Crook Center, because when we were building the multiplex, we offered tours so people could see it, and I, my comments at this time, because it is quite an active zone where there's having to do decommissioning before they can do some structure, it's, it's an unsafe place right now for tours, but I said, once, you know, in the new year, once things are starting to come into place, if there's an opportunity, we will definitely do, look at doing that, so.
Having said that, Your Worship, I'm kind of hoping I can get council there at the next council meeting. You'll have to wear Tybex suits and booties and hard hats, of course, but the good news is you won't have to wear a respirator, so you could actually talk to each other while you're there.
Counsel McFadden, sorry, was it your hand up?
Yeah, just regarding the Crook Center, my understanding is we're still under budget, but probably little behind in the time completion date. Is that still the case?
Through your worship, yeah, we're, we're quite a bit behind, and we'll get further behind with this work that we're undertaking. The budget's in good shape, but because of all this extra cost having to do with the lid and the asbestos and the slowdowns because of that, we are going to have to have a session where we go back over and look at all the remaining items and say, "Well, what can we live without for the time being, or what can we change to save some money?" Just to make darn sure that we still have a bit of contingency before the project's finished.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, did I see any other hands up? No? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent calendar, 11:01. Counsel Gledue, seconded by Counsel Bellak. All those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. And strategic priorities chart, Jim?
Through your worship, you will note that there are more check-offs. There are a couple of items still to be actioned before the end of the year, including the election, but it's still intended to be held on November 19th. And we would certainly urge folks to come out. We would like to beat the total that came out for the Candlelight Dinner.
That, that would be pretty good. That would be about, what, 5%? So, yeah, we're hoping for a bit more than that. The last two elections, we've averaged approximately 40% for electorate turnout, just over 3,000 people, so we're hoping to definitely do a lot better than that this election. We're encouraging everybody to get out. With 15 people running, that's quite a cross-section in the community, and hopefully engages a lot of people to be involved. So any question and answer period? Nobody signed up for that, I'm assuming, Brenda? So we'll move on then to media question period. Do we have anything at this time? Matthew?
On the tendental question, that orientation on the...
Yes.
What time is that there?
9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m.
Yeah, okay, 9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m. to noon, then lunch, and then there's a closed session from 12:30 to about 2:30 to go over updating new counselors on all the business of the corporation that has not yet been released to the public.
But for the media, we definitely invite you from 9:00 to noon and stay for lunch as well. That was your only question, was around the lunch, wasn't it, Matthew?
Yes, what will it be, sir? It'll be a cucumber sandwich.
Excellent. So if no other immediate questions at this time, then a motion to recess to closed. Counsel Bellak, seconded by Counsel Schuman. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried, and we will take a five-minute intermission.